Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. This is the zoning board meeting of adjustment for the city of Jersey City. In accordance with the Open Public Act Meeting Act, we advise that the following items will be heard at a regular board meeting at the Jersey City Zoning Board. Okay. So, no new matter involving an applicant will be started after 10:00 PM. At 9:00 PM, the board chair will decide and advise applicant whether they will be heard. If an applicant cannot be heard because of the lateness of the hour, the matter will be carried over to the next regular scheduled meeting with preservation of notice. With that, can you please join me in the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Francisco, do we have any sunshine announcement?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. We have notices to be marked. This would be B1 for the record.
Thank you, Francisco. May we have a roll call?
Yes. So I see Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Commissioner Zablucchi.
Here.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
And Vice Charoio.
Here.
We have a total of six commissioners tonight.
Can we swear in the staff?
Yes.
Francisco, do we have any correspondents or any adjournments?
Yes. In new business, item number 14, this is case Z2023-0019. The address is 137 Delaware Ave. They've requested to carry to the January 9th meeting with preservation of notice. Item number 15, this is case Z22-078. The address is 140 Glenwood Avenue. They've carried to the January 9th meeting with preservation of notice. And lastly, item number 17, this is case Z2024-0031. The address is 2800 JFK Boulevard. They have also requested to carry to the January 9th meeting with preservation of notice. And all other items on the agenda will be moving forward tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to start with new business. The first case we'll hear is case Z2024-0027. That's 198 Freeman Avenue. Janelle Payne. One.
You gotta be sworn in.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, better? Okay. I'll say that again. Vincent Vertoramo, the firm is Vertoramo and Vertoramo on Kennedy Boulevard here in Jersey City. And I have the pleasure tonight to represent Janelle Payne with regard to this application involving 198 Freeman Avenue. I'll be calling one witness tonight. Mr. Allen Feld is the architect, who will describe the project. It's a C variance. A short synopsis of what the project actually is. It's an existing non-conforming lot with a two-family home on it. There's a three-bedroom apartment on the first floor. There's a rear yard setback technical violation. And the request is to be able to build out over the first floor to just basically square up the building and make the second floor reflective of the first floor. And that's pretty much the sum total of the application. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Feld to come up. And if you'd like to see the schematics, I'll have my paralegal plug in the computer.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah. I do. Allen Feld.
So Mr. Vedderamo, Mr. Feld has been here numerous times, so we accept his expertise.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Join the club.
And it's this one that you want to?
Yeah.
That's perfect. Yeah. It's just a USB.
Can you hear me? Yeah. It was muted. As you can see from this first page on the site plan drawing, this lot is 60 feet deep by 25 feet wide. And that's typical of these adjacent lots to the corner. And this property has an existing building on it already. The first floor extends to the rear. And in the front is a two-story section. So the purpose of this application is to build over the existing one-story section, to build a two-story section to match what's on the ground floor. Right now, it's a two-family house. We go to the next page. It's two families. One family on the first floor, a second family on the second floor. Now, the first floor is a three-bedroom unit. And this new addition would create two bedrooms to complement the first floor, which would make it also a three-bedroom unit and expanding the living room, dining room, which currently is very undersized. There is no expansion further than the existing one-story section. And if we go to the next page. The new addition would blend in with the existing structure. And from the outside, it would look like it was a continuous addition. There would be no sense that this was an addition when the project is completed.
There's no, just by word foundation, you would agree that there's no increase in the amount of non-compliance?
That's correct.
And the footprint isn't being changed?
That's correct.
And all that we're doing is by adding this, it would bring into a degree of uniformity?
That's correct.
And the property itself is burdened by the size of the lot extent, and there's no change in that?
That is correct.
And there's going to be no increase in the deficiency with regard to the setback?
That is correct.
That's all I have.
Are there any public comments on the matter on hand? Okay. Do we have any comments from the board members?
I just have one question. I just want to understand. I mean, I saw the thing. So the first floor, it goes all the way out. And the second floor goes all the way out. So what's up there right now? Just a roof?
It's vacant space, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Not for me.
Staff?
Yes. Okay, so I will be very brief. As was mentioned by the attorney, the lot is undersized. Per our rear yard setback requirements, lots that are 1,800 square feet or less do need to provide a minimum rear yard setback of 25% of the lot depth. In this case, the applicant would have been required to provide 15 feet. However, they are providing the existing eight and a half feet. The rear yard minimum is in direct correlation to the hardship of the undersized lot. The structure is non-conforming, pre-existing, and complies with the front yard setback requirements of meeting the predominant setback. Meeting the current yard requirement or setback requirement would be impossible for the application. The applicant will not touch the current rear yard space. And instead, the scope of the work is to expand the second floor to create the same layout that the current owner has on the first floor. Staff does not see any detriment to the zone, plan, and ordinance. It is reasonable and needed as it will allow the applicant to expand the current living quarters without taking away the yard space they currently have. It is the opinion of the staff that this application can be granted as a Class 1 hardship variance. Staff does recommend approval with conditions. However, staff would like to make a correction to the conditions as number four, the condition number four is an error and does not apply to this application.
Thank you. You have a question? No? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Barron.
Approve.
Commissioner Boyle.
Approve.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Zablucchi.
Yes.
And Vice Charoio.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next case on the agenda is Z2024-0007. And that is 659 Jersey Avenue. Attorney Stephen Joseph.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Stephen Joseph for the applicants. I do have notices here. This is a notice case.
Vinnie is somewhere around.
Oh, Vinnie's somewhere. All right. Wonderful. There he is. All right. 659 Jersey Avenue. This is mid-block between 8th and 7th in the historic district. The applicant's proposing to construct a 69.50 square foot addition. That's, that is not a mistake. It is less than 100 square foot addition in the historic district. It's a four-story, single-family house. So this requires historic approval, which we've already been before HPC. They've issued a certificate of appropriateness with conditions. And we need approval from this board, not for site plan approval, but just for two C variances. It's a rear yard setback and the rear yard encroachment of the staircase off of the rear yard deck. We have two experts this evening. We'll bring up our architect first. All right, let's get you sworn in.
Yes, I do. Ali Qureshi. Q-U-R-E-S-H-I. First name is Ali, A-L-I.
Ali, your license in the state of Jersey, it's in, your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
And I'll just note for the board that Ali has been previously qualified before the historic preservation commission.
Yes, I was.
Won't you walk us through the plans?
Sure. So basically, we're just adding a small 15 feet wide by four and a half feet deep addition to an existing kitchen. And also a stair which is going towards the backyard. This triggers, this lot and the house, both are non-conforming. The lot is supposed, 100 feet is required, and we are at 75 feet. So that poses hardship on any kind of expansion we do. So it's a very small, little addition to make the kitchen very desirable, even though it's a small addition, but it will make a big difference to the kitchen. The variances we are required are two. One is, actually, the planner will go a little bit more on the variances. We can just show the floor plan. So this addition is on the first floor, which is a big, open room. And towards the end of the room is the kitchen. And this addition sticks out from the kitchen. And there's nothing under, there's no cupboard space under that addition. So it's going to be open at the bottom of this addition. So you want to go up a little? So it's going to look something like this. In addition to this small expansion, we're going to put a terrace on the existing roof of the kitchen. So the roof already exists, so we can put special pavers to make it usable and also guardrail around it. And to get to this terrace, there is an egress window already in place. Do you want to show other drawings? So on the left is the existing rear elevation of the house. And on the right is the proposed one, which shows the terrace on top of the existing kitchen roof and the addition, proposed addition, and the stair. That's pretty much it.
Do we have any questions for the architect? All right. We have a planner just for some very brief testimony on the variances. All right, let's bring Kristen up.
I do. Kristen Russell, RUSSELL.
Kristen, your license is current, good standing this evening?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight just to go over two variances and one design waiver associated with this application. The first one is a rear yard setback variance. The zone requires 30 feet. And with the addition that is being proposed this evening, we will have a 17.25 rear yard setback. Similarly, the zoning allows a rear yard encroachment of the stairs of four feet. And we are encroaching 13 feet into that rear yard. These are C bulk variances. They can be considered C1 or C2. C1 is the variance that we talk about when there is a hardship. And C2 is when there's a better zoning alternative. So I'm going to present some arguments that would apply to both or either, as I think they both apply to this case. The variances being requested this evening do advance purposes of the municipal land use law, including promoting the public health, safety, and welfare, providing adequate light air and open space, ensuring that the development of municipalities does not conflict with the development of neighboring municipalities, promoting a desirable visual environment, and promoting the conservation of historic sites and districts, which is important since this is in a historic district. That's okay. I'll point out that the projected, the proposed projection of the kitchen expansion is 4.5 feet. And the neighbors on the left-hand side have a similar projection. In fact, it's a bit, it projects a bit further once you take into account the bay window that they have. And so we're going to be meeting that projection, not extending beyond it. We also have a setback between our house and theirs to give them a bit more space between our proposed expansion and their existing home. On the right-hand side, if you're looking at the house, we will be projecting beyond the rear wall of that building. However, an existing shed on that side of the house will be removed, and stairs will be added in. The stairs are similar to stairs that are already existing on that block a few doors down as well. So none of this is out of character with the neighborhood. The H-zone does have a purpose of recognizing the special significance of the neighborhoods because of their varied and well-preserved historic character. They reflect Jersey City's past and its unique geographic location. So an important characteristic, the historic characteristic of this parcel is being preserved here. The property owner wishes to stay in their house, wishes to improve their home. And as was mentioned by the attorney at the beginning of this presentation, the Historic Preservation Commission gave their blessing to this project. Nothing will be visible from the front yard, and it improves the existing historic structure. The master plan, R Jersey City 2021, includes the goal of prioritizing the needs and ideas of current residents, which is exactly what we're doing here. We have a current resident in this historic home, and they have these needs to have an improved kitchen that we're trying to accommodate through this addition. Also, there is one design waiver that I want to mention. This doesn't rise to the level of a variance. But there is a requirement in the code that the rear terraces, as you may recall, the architect mentioned that the roof area, basically, of the proposed addition is going to have a little bit of outdoor space on it. The zoning code has a requirement that roof decks and terraces shall not be visible from the street. Okay, fine, we check that. And shall be setback a minimum of 10 feet from any front facade. Not a problem because we're not in the front. And also that, it goes on to say that the terraces shall provide privacy screening that measures six feet high. I suspect that this had something to do with the adjacency of neighbors when we're talking about like a multifamily or rear decks that may be immediately adjacent to each other. But that's not the case here. They don't want to close themselves in, and it's really not immediately adjacent to the neighbors. So they're asking for a waiver to not provide that six-foot privacy fence. So those are the, a quick summary of the two variances and the one design waiver. I think they are justifiable by either a C1 or a C2 variance. There is no detriment to the neighborhood. They are actually aligning with the neighbor to the left. And the neighbor to the right will actually see, I believe, improved conditions with the removal of that shed and the more open stairwell that's proposed there. Neighbors to the rear will not be impacted. In fact, a building, I should have mentioned, a building to the rear has no windows whatsoever. So it's really just a blank wall. So nobody using that building will even know about this. And again, it really does just improve the conditions of the home for the homeowner. And we humbly ask for your approval.
That does conclude our direct testimony.
Is there any public comments on this, on 659 Jersey Avenue? Do we have any questions among the board members?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just a quick question. The picture you just had up, I'm sorry. Actually, there was a picture, the second and third picture had the, I'm assuming the building right next to it. And I just want to double, just want to ask a little bit. There we go. The second picture and the third one. Where that window is on the side, is that the building next to it that's protruding out? So is that window going to be covered? The neighbor's window going to be covered? No? Okay.
So that window will not be covered. We're going to be extending the same distance as that projection that you can see. However, we're going to be pulled over, if you're looking at the picture, to the right.
Okay.
So there will be several feet
I just want to.
between our building and that window.
I just want to.
Yeah.
That's good. Cool.
Okay. Any more questions? Francisco? Staff?
Staff agree to applicant's professional's testimony. I would just ask the applicants to agree to the conditions in your staff report as well as the memo issued by HPC staff.
Yes, the applicant agrees to all conditions in both reports.
With that, staff approval.
Okay, thank you. So may I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Barron.
Approve.
Commissioner Boyle.
Approve.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Zablucchi.
Yes.
And Vice Charoio.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back to case Z21-093. Mr. Benjamin Wine.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvella Micali on behalf of the applicant, 225 Dwight Street Holdings LLC. I'll be brief. This is a little bit of an unusual one. But we're here actually seeking to formally abandon an approval that was obtained back in January of 2023, with apologies to Mr. Harrington as he got that approval. So my client was ultimately purchased the property. That approval back in January of '23 included an adaptive reuse component of an existing church, if you remember, a facade element. Ultimately, actually, prior to my client purchasing the property, the prior owner demolished the entire church on the property and then sold the property to my client. My client ultimately, the good thing is they did not want to go forward with that approval and have their own plans, which were actually before the planning board next month for. However, in the interim, the tax assessor basically said, "I'm sorry, too bad. We are assessing your taxes based on an approval that despite the fact that it couldn't be built." I had very good conversations with Mr. Black, Cameron Black, over the course of a few months. And he acknowledged that it is abandoned because you can't adaptively reuse a building that's no longer there. But again, the tax assessor is insisting that we actually come back to this board and seek a formal abandonment on the record of that prior approval. That's really the application in a nutshell. And I also would respectfully request as well, and with appreciation to Mr. Black, he did authorize the resolution to be available and for me to have drafted it in advance of this meeting. Again, so that prior to the close of 2024, Again, so that prior to the close of 2024, we could submit a signed resolution to the tax assessor so that for the 2025 year going forward, this can be taken formally off the books.
Okay, thank you. Board members have any questions? Benny, what do we do?
No, that's what you, staff has, I mean, that's what the assessor wants in order to remove it.
Okay, Francisco?
All right. On a motion to approve the withdrawal? Are we doing that?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a motion to approve the withdrawal?
I'll make a motion to approve the withdrawal.
All right. Commissioner Barron.
Approve.
Commissioner Boyle.
Approve.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Zablaki.
Yes.
And Vice Charu.
Yes, there is a first withdrawal.
Thank you. And just for posterity, would you, would you prefer to do the resolution now or with your resolutions later this evening as a formal vote? I do have a copy with me, yes.
Do you need it? Or I'll send it to you tomorrow. We'll do it when we do the rest of the resolutions this evening.
Okay.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so we're back to case Z22-021. And that is 443-447 Jersey Avenue, Mr. Steven Joseph, again.
Steven Joseph here for the applicant, just for, we're going to call this 445 Jersey. This is a notice case, and I do have the notices here.
Yeah. So Iris, so the record is clear. So we could say that we have reviewed the notices and they comply, and we're putting them on as A1.
All right, 445 Jersey Avenue. This is located on Jersey Ave between Bright Street and New York Street. It's in the historic district. The applicant's proposing to renovate, restore, add to, and adaptively reuse an existing house of worship as a 10-unit dwelling. In order to accomplish this, the applicant requires HPC approval, which we've already obtained a certificate of appropriateness from HPC, and approval from this board for preliminary and final major site plan with D variances for use and height, as well as C variances for rear yard setback, building coverage, lot coverage, and parking. Whole bunch of variances here. As we walk through the plans, you'll see why this is a very old church. And reusing it as a dwelling poses a lot of problems. If the board also recalls, there was another project, 90 Bright Street, which is to the rear of this, that this board had also approved. There's an easement running through that property as well, which we'll touch on briefly. But let's get the architects sworn in and walk through the plans.
Okay.
Yes, I do. It's William Weckenman, last name spelled W-E-C-K-E-N-M-A-N-N. Thank you.
Will, your license is currently in good standing this evening?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. So as Steve mentioned, project is 445 Jersey Avenue. It's located on the west side of Jersey Avenue, and it encompasses both the existing church as well as the adjacent building, which we're referring to as the Vestry Building. Both of these buildings, what's unique about this church is that it's a mid-block building, and it has almost 100% lot coverage currently. So it was quite a challenge to try to fit in apartments into a building that has 100% lot coverage and is built right up against a number of the adjoining buildings. I'm going to quickly go over the existing conditions. So the building consists of the church, which is this section here. Again, it's built all the way to the rear lot line, as well as the side lot lines, and butts up against the neighbor on both sides. The Vestry Building is sort of a mashup. There are three distinct sections to the building. There's a three-story masonry building that fronts onto Jersey Avenue. There's also a two-story masonry building on the rear lot line. And then there's a framed infill section that runs between both of the masonry buildings. What we are proposing is a removal of the rear 15 or so feet of the existing church building. And that will allow for light and air into the units, the rear-facing units, which would otherwise not be permitted. We are also removing this, the back section, the two-story masonry building, as well as the framed section in the middle. The three-story section that fronts on Jersey Avenue will be preserved and repurposed. Another interesting feature is that we will be maintaining a portion of the rear wall of the church. This is actually a great suggestion that came from HPC. And that'll sort of reflect the history of what was there. It also serves as a privacy fence along the rear property line. We are putting three floors within the church. And due to the way that the roof lines work, there's a significant amount of volume within the roof itself. So we are proposing two dormers to be constructed on the existing roof. And those will be set back far enough, which I'll show you in a subsequent slide. They're set back far enough to where they won't be visible from the public right away. We are proposing a four-story addition for the Vestry Building. And what we're doing is carving out a small courtyard in the middle of the building, which will serve as the main entrance to both this portion of the building as well as the church itself. As per all of our applications, we're proposing new landscaping in the front yard, as well as new curb and sidewalk, as well as the maintaining of the existing street trees. I'll just skip through the standard details. I won't spend too much time on this, but I'll just reference these. These are the existing floor plans, so you can get a sense of what the existing conditions are. I'll touch on the proposed floor plans shortly. This is the main level of the church here, open sanctuary. And then this is the Vestry Building here with a series of offices and a church hall in the center. So the church has a partial cellar, which we are proposing to clear out and utilize for utility space, refuse, bike storage, as well as some residence storage and amenity space. This is the first floor plan. We're proposing six units within the existing church building, and then four units for the Vestry. The Vestry units will be four duplex units. And the church has a mix of unit types. As I mentioned, you can see here, this is the central courtyard. We are carving a access utilizing the existing entrance from the Vestry Building here. Residents will come in at this location and then enter either the main sanctuary of the church here or the Vestry Building on this side. The existing doors to the church will remain. We are going to be replacing them with historic wood doors to match the historic tax photographs. But all the windows and doors on the front of the church will be remaining. And that includes the existing stained glass windows. The church is divided front and back. So we have a two-bedroom unit in the front here. And then we have two duplex units in the rear, which are also two bedrooms. These are the living, the lower level, which is the living room and the kitchens. The Vestry Building here is the same, similar configuration. When you enter, this unit in the rear has the living space and kitchen on the lower level. The same is true for the front-facing unit. Moving up the building, on the second floor, the configuration is similar. We have a unit, a two-bedroom unit in the front of the church. And then we have the upper level of both of those duplex units. And then the same thing in the Vestry Building. We have the upper level of the rear duplex and the upper level of the front duplex. The third floor is a little bit different. But again, similar configuration. We have one unit towards the front. And what we're doing with these units, both the front-facing and the rear-facing unit is we're maintaining this, the existing decorative arches. And the front unit will also have access to a loft in the upper level of the steeple. The third floor of the Vestry Building, it's again, two units. The lower level for each of the duplex apartments. And then here we have the fourth floor, which is only in the Vestry Building, which is the upper level of both of those duplex apartments. I mentioned that the dormers were set back, so they won't be visible from the public right away. The same is true for the fourth-floor addition that we're proposing on this building. It's set back to not be visible from the street. And we are providing a green roof in those, in that roof area. Roof plan is pretty straightforward. The only thing to note is that this rear-facing duplex unit will have an occupied roof deck. Moving on to the Jersey Avenue elevation. This will look almost exactly like it does currently. All the stained glass windows will remain. We're providing thermal windows on the interior of all these existing windows. We will also be replacing all of the doors at the church. And these are designed to match the tax assessor's photograph. We are also replacing the windows at the Vestry Building, as well as providing an enlarged entry here for the building. The rear of both buildings, it has a more contemporary feel. So since we are doing a major intervention at the rear of the church by removing the rear 15 feet, we're accentuating that section cut by providing aluminum panels that frames the profile of the rear church wall. And we are also providing large amounts of glass to further accentuate that design. That is also carried over onto the addition to the Vestry Building, although it is a little bit more simple with a more rectilinear design here. And just to note, the ground floor units will have access to the newly created rear yard. The side elevations are fairly simple. We're providing new windows in the existing church windows. And then we are providing similar windows that are proportional and aligned with the windows on the lower floors. You can also see here, we're proposing a new storefront entrance into the church. And that design is carried around to the opposite side as well. And you can see here, this hatched area represents where the building abuts the neighboring building to the north. Here we have our sightline diagrams showing the relationship of the additions to the street. Pretty straightforward. We have one on both sides, both over the Vestry Building as well as the main church. A portion of the building is visible through the rear yards on York Street. So this is a diagram indicating what exactly will be visible as you move up and down York Street. So you can see it's a relatively narrow sliver, but it is, it will be visible. Finally, we have our material boards and our standard window details here. And then I'll conclude my presentation with a few renderings. So this is a rendering of the main facade, showing the proposed improvements. I also have another view here, as well as one straight on. And then finally, a view of the rear of the building.
That's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. We'll bring up our planner, Sam Bellamy now, get him sworn in.
In the front.
Yes, I do. Samuel Bellamy, last name B-E-L-L-A-M-Y.
Sam, your license is currently in good standing this evening?
Yep, my license has a professional planners and good standing. Thank you, good to see everyone.
Take it away.
All right, so as Mr. Joseph mentioned, we are here for D1 use variance approval tonight, as well as D6 height variance approval and some bulk variances related to minimum number of parking spaces, as well as some existing non-conforming conditions with respect to the building coverage, lot coverage, and rear yard setback. So as this board is aware, D1 use variances can be granted for special reasons and that a site is particularly well-suited for the use and that the purposes of planning are advanced. In this case, we're located in the historic district, which does permit townhouse uses, which is a specified type of residential use permitted in the zone that's defined by the Land Development Ordinance. By definition, what we're proposing is a multifamily building in that it doesn't meet the exact definition of a typical townhouse as it's defined. So in this case, it's a very technical variance that we're asking for, and that residential is permitted. It's just the type of residential that we're asking for. I think that the reason why townhouse is the specified use permitted in the historic district is really that's the character of the neighborhoods and the type of uses that you see. So in trying to keep with that development pattern, that's a permitted use. Obviously, with the historic structure that we can't demolish, we're kind of stuck with what's there. And I think the architect did a great job of creating a layout and adding additions and rehabbing the building in a way that could accommodate a residential use within the existing structure that's there today. The site is also substantially larger than the typical lot in the historic district. We're a little over 7,500 square feet, where a townhouse lot's at 1,800 square.
We're a little over 7,500 square feet, where a townhouse lot's at 1,800 square feet. So between both the existing condition, the, the really technical nature, the residential use, and the substantial lot size here that allows for appropriate unit layouts within the building and, and mix of units, I think the site is particularly well-suited. I'll also mention that we are within the permitted density in the, in the historic district, albeit that's a density related to town, townhouse uses of 75 units per acre. The 10 units we're proposing here is at about 56 units per acre. So we're, we're within what, what is contemplated for the density on this property. With respect to the D6 height variance, with the fourth addition that we're proposing on the, on the vestry building, it increases the building height to 45 feet point, 45.25 feet. The maximum permitted height in the zone is 40 feet. The four-story is permitted with the, the maximum four stories. It's just the, the building height in feet that we're asking for here. Again, this is a, in addition to an existing structure, the lower third, three floors do have greater floor-ceiling heights and, and typical floor-to-floor heights than what's contemplated in the zone. We're proposing 11-foot floor-to-floor on the four-story, which is consistent with the other floors, but just given that extra height and extra height between each floor, we're over what's permitted in the zone. The building itself is consistent with the roof peak of the church building. And the, the building directly to the south of us, the school, it's on the corner of the property, has 100% lot coverage. So really, with the proposed addition and increased height, we're not having any substantial detriment on, on open space adjacent to the property. So with that, I, I think this project does promote several of the purposes of municipal land use law. I think it is an appropriate use and development of the site, again, as a residential use that we're proposing, consistent with purpose A. The density, as I mentioned, is within what's permitted in the zone, consistent with purpose E. We are securing safety from fire, flood, and other disasters. We're bringing the impervious coverage down on this property, as well as bringing the building at the full compliance with the current fire and building codes. The, the adaptive reuse nature of the property does conserve historic sites and districts, and that's consistent with purpose J. Then overall, I think this project does promote a desirable land use law, desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I, the municipal land use law. Moving into the bulk variances that we're requesting tonight, the first is for minimum parking. There's a requirement of half a space per unit for buildings starting at 10 units or over. So 10, less than 10 units, it's actually prohibited. 10 units and over, you have a parking requirement. Given the current conditions on the property, the, the church and vestry building that can't be demolished, it's really not feasible to provide parking on the site without, obviously, substantial demolition that would, would have otherwise been required. I think this, the location of the site itself in downtown Jersey City, with access to the path, to the, to the light rail, to the ferry, there's, there's multiple means of public transportation that can be accessed, also has access to parks and, and retail corridors. So I think the site, I think the, the variance for the, the parking can be granted by this board, and, and the, the requirement itself would be five, five spaces here. As I mentioned, there's existing non-conforming conditions. In this case, we're actually improving all those existing non-conforming conditions. We're reducing the building coverage from 96.4% to 80.9%. That's where 60% is permitted. We're reducing the impervious lot coverage from 100% to 86.2%. That's where 80% is permitted. And we're also increasing the rear yard setback from the existing .42 feet to 12.17 feet. So all those are improvements, I think, and are overall benefits to the, the project that we're proposing. As, as Will mentioned, we're also adding green roofing here, which would help towards managing stormwater runoff, as well as front yard landscaping, sidewalks, and increased tree pits. So I think overall, the benefits here would outweigh the detriment. As I said, the, the property can accommodate the increased height, and the, the site is particularly well-suited for the multifamily use that we're proposing. Wrapping it up with the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the, to the public good or general welfare. I think overall, the adaptive reuse, the project does maintain the historically significant building and, and really bring this property back to an active use. As I mentioned, I think all those improvements to the existing non-conforming conditions do have benefits. And then finally, I don't see a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I think this project's directly in line with what the purpose of the historic district is by adaptively reusing a historic structure. We're also consistent with several of the goals of the, the recent historic preservation element of the master plan, as well as the land use element of the master plan. With that, I'll conclude that I think this project meets both the positive and negative criteria. I think that wraps up my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Those are all of our witnesses this evening, architect and planner. That does conclude our direct testimony.
Are there any members of the public?
I'm sorry, are there any members of the public that would like to address this issue? Any comments from the board members?
I just have one question, because I must have missed this in the beginning. Where on Jersey is this?
It's mid-block between York and Brighton.
Okay, the other side, okay.
Okay. So when, when, when you construct this, are you keeping the, the cross on the top, or are you going to remove that?
Will can, should testify about that.
Yeah, the, the cross will remain.
That's sacrilegious.
As well as...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The cross will remain. All, all, everything that's there on the building currently will remain.
Including the stained glass, right, Will?
Yeah, including the stained glass.
What church was this? Just out of curiosity.
It was a, like epic, what is that, the?
Episcopalian.
Like Baptist or ever, yeah. Yeah.
Just curious, do you know when this building was actually, was constructed?
I don't think it was Catholic, though.
I, I don't know the, the exact date.
It was a Baptist church?
I'm just trying to see where it was. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and with that, there was no public comments?
No, nothing from the board, right? No other questions? Do you have a question?
No.
Okay, staff?
Okay. So staff does agree with Mr. Bellamy's testimony. Staff would like to just point out a few items. The applicant sought and received approval from the HPC at its October 21st, 2024 meeting under the application H-23-0188. Overall, staff does agree. Staff does recommend approval with conditions outlined in my report.
Okay.
So the, the applicant does accept the conditions in the, the staff report, also in the certificate of appropriateness from HPC. There were two HPC meetings on this. If the board is more curious about the history of the project, that is all available on, on YouTube now, so.
Okay. So can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Barron?
Approve.
Commissioner Boyle?
Approve.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabliki?
Yes.
And Vice Charadou.
Yes.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Iris, do you need a break? Iris? Yeah, I think so, okay. We're going to take a break, maybe 10 minutes, 5 minutes? 5 minutes or 10 minutes break? Can we call the meeting to order, please? Okay, so we start, so we're going back to all business, which is case Z20043, 201 New York Avenue, and the attorney is Mr. Charles Harrington. So I give you the floor, Mr. Harrington.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley. I represent the applicant. My understanding tonight is that the objector's counsel is going to continue with her case. She has some fact witnesses to, to present to the board. I, and, and that's my understanding, that's the extent of tonight. I, I don't have anything, you know, further to present, and I want to reserve cross-examination until their, their full case is in.
Yes, thank you very much. Francisco called me yesterday and said, you know, you've got an agenda with a lot of other people, we need to get heard. Can we maybe cut things up, move some things to January? And I said, definitely my planner. And then as we talked about it, like, I'm going to get all my witnesses in January. We may have a special date, we may not, we'll, we'll deal with that then. And what I'm going to do is get as many of my residents as I can. I had to excuse one person, I mentioned to, to Mr. La Paglia why. As many of my residents as I can, that Mr. La Paglia has said, they would normally be members of the public giving testimony, but because they live in a building whose HOA is an interested party in this hearing, and because the HOA has to be represented and is represented, I will put them on as witnesses. But I'm really mostly just going to swear them in and say, you know, what do you have to say? I have little outlines that they gave me of their testimony, but they're fact witnesses. The last of them would be Gabriel Feliu. He is the president of the HOA. He's a resident of the Safran, I think since 2010. And he's also a vice president of the Harsemus Cove Association. So he has a little bit larger sphere, and I am planning to put him on last. I don't think I'll take more than an hour. Mr. Feliu does have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll work through with him, but it's relatively short. The others, I think, you know, a few minutes each, I think, will be fine. I don't want a three-minute cutoff, because they are witnesses, and that takes a little longer for them, but it's relatively short. I was talking to Francisco, who said, we might, depending on all, everything else on your agenda, there are some members of the public here who have been coming up to me and saying, can I talk tonight? I said, who are you? I don't, you know. I said, Francisco said, you might choose to say, just like you did in October and in November on this application, if they want to make comments now, rather than wait for the end, and if you have time, you can hear them, and if not, we're definitely going to be seeing each other in January. Okay. Thank you, yes. And again, one, one person's baby is sick, one person, I had to get up, but we're going to get as many as we can on, on and done tonight. And so if they're ready, I think Radu and Elaine, I don't know if you both want to speak, or just one of you can handle the, okay. Hello?
Hi.
So could you tell them your name and your residence, and I think you'll get sworn in.
Mike?
Sir, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your full name, please.
My name is Radu, that's R-A-D-U, Manolescu, that's M-A-N-O-L-E-S-C-U. I live at the Safran, 217 Newark Avenue, apartment 515.
515, okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to say, you had three points that are based on your own sense impressions, living at the Safran. This is not expert testimony, you're not an expert, but you're here to make comments about how, what you've seen in the application and what you've heard might affect you guys. It's three comments, you're welcome to just say them all, or if it makes you feel more comfortable now that you're at the stand, I can guide you through them. But if you're perfectly comfortable, just go ahead, and we'll be on and off, and on to the next one.
Yeah. So the applicant's team has mentioned how the building's height will be a beacon visible from great distance. That's just another way of saying how out of character the building would be for the neighborhood. The second point is the shadow analysis provided by the applicant shows additional shadows in the morning, in winter. That's exactly when people are at home and in the days that are shortest, so the impact of those shadows is greatest. And the third point refers to the removal of the distinction between the, the road surface and the sidewalk on Maxwell Alley. Maxwell Alley is also used by Domino's Pizza delivery vehicles, which often speed on that street. So pedestrians will be at higher risk if you remove the distinction between the, the road surface and the sidewalk. That's what I got.
And that's, and you're talking about the question about the bollards, and if they raise the pavement, will there be balls?
Yeah, the, the, the vehicles are, are racing, they're, they're fast. And so if there's a sidewalk, then they can't go there. If there's no difference between the road and the sidewalk, then, you know, they, there's, there's a danger of collisions.
Okay, thank you very much. And so the next one I think I have is, are you guys ready? No? Hethel Patel?
Hi, good evening.
Yes, I do.
Hethel Patel, H-E-T-A-L, last name P-A-T-E-L.
And I'm going to say, you had worked, again, not an expert, not accustomed to testifying, you had written your comment out, and I said that I would certainly say, do you have a comment? And you would say, yes, it is, and you can comment. And if you're not clear, I will help ask a question, but I think it's quite clear, and I would say just go ahead, if the, if the board will indulge me with that.
Okay, great.
If I could just ask if she could identify what unit, number it was in?
409. Right next to what will be this hotel. So the reason why I wanted to, oh, sorry, here we go. I decided to move to Jersey City about five years ago. Before I purchased at the Safran, I rented for a year in Newport. I thought that the high-rise experience, being able to see Manhattan, would be phenomenal, and I hated it. Like, I absolutely hated it. It just was not what I wanted for myself. It wasn't the experience that I wanted. I didn't like the shadows, I didn't like the tall buildings. And so when I decided to purchase, I focused my search in the, the historic district. And I absolutely fell in love with the neighborhood, I decided to purchase there, and I like it so much that I want to buy another place in Jersey City, sell the one that I have, and buy something a little bit bigger, so that it could be a little bit more permanent for me. But the problem is, if, why would I want to invest my money in Jersey City if the next unit that I buy, the next condo that I buy, some developer can just come along and say, hey, you know what? Zoning ordinances, they're just optional, I'm going to go get variances, and they're going to build up something right next to me. Like, is that what it's going to be like in Jersey City? Is that we invest our hard-earned money, we put all of our life savings sometimes into these homes, and then somebody just comes along and says, you know what? I like to build something higher next to you, and that's mine. Your property value, that's going to get cut by $100,000, means nothing to me, because I want to build a, a hotel. That, by the way, again, does not belong in this neighborhood. It is taller, it is longer, it is wider, it is deeper than anything else that needs to be there. And I just don't understand why we're having this conversation.
Okay, thanks, okay, thanks. And so the next one, unless Franny Gordon and Kevin Yu are here, they had warned me that they might not be able to be, we have Gabriel Feliu.
I swear. Gabriel Feliu, G-A-B-R-I-E-L, last name Feliu, F like Frank, E-L-I-U, 217 Newark Avenue, apartment 414.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Feliu, as with the other witnesses, you know you're here, I know you've put an enormous amount of thought and work into this, you are here as a fact witness to talk about what you have seen and heard, and help the board understand your experiences as a resident of the Safran, the, I think elected and re-elected since 2015, I believe. Put that on the record, please, mine isn't testimony, board president of the Homeowners' Association of the Safran, and a vice president of the Harsemus Cove Neighborhood Association, took me a long time to learn to pronounce it, Harsemus. And so with that, if you want to start in, I understand you have a PowerPoint, that some of these slides are just basically reminding people of what we've seen before, and talking a little bit about how that influenced you. Most of them are photographs you took yourself, and you will explain them as you and you will explain them as you go through.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. And I may stop you, if, again, if I think there's something that's not quite clear, I will stop you. Otherwise, I won't try to say anything, just let you go.
Did you wanna cover these slides?
Okay.
You don't wanna cover these?
No, 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 we can absolutely go right back to your beginning.
Okay.
Since he wants to hear from you, there you go.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for hearing me. Again, my name is Gabby Feliu, you can call me Gabby, if, if I see you again after this. I've been living at the Safran since 2010, and I've been a proud, proud resident there. And I'm also vice president of the Harsemus Cove Neighborhood Association. I've been elected as their vice president in 2021, and I just was re-elected for another term. And I've been serving as president of the Safran HOA condo board since 2015. That's coming up now on 10 years. Like you on the board, I need one second, I'm sorry. I see, I'm not getting presentation mode on this. You'll have to excuse me.
You can read the slide, because the record's not gonna show the words that were on the slide, so if you're a little bit wondering what to do reading the slides, I'd like to get you out.
I have some notes that are not reading the slides, of course.
Yes, we can do that. You wouldn't print it out and get it to you and the, and the board members, but I think that's a good idea. I think we should, yeah. We'll submit it between now and the next meeting with a copy for you.
I'm sorry. So continuing on, my apologies. I wanted to say that I, I, I serve on the boards, and I take my positions volunteering on these boards very seriously, and as I know you do. I have a moral obligation that was empowered to me by residents that I represent at the Harsemus Cove Association. And I also have a fiduciary responsibility as president and board member of the Safran HOA, protecting the 76 owners who live there. So just to reiterate about this neighborhood commercial, this is a neighborhood commercial zone, right? Neighborhood being the key word. Any commercial uses are for serving the neighborhood. It's not the other way around. It's not a commercial neighborhood zone, right? Commercial zones, without the neighborhood, that's where commercial uses predominate and draw customers from other areas. That's not what we're talking about here, right? It's a commerce, it's a neighborhood commercial zone.
And I just wanna interrupt you for a second, just like, naturally, the planner will be talking about that. This is Mr. Feliu's lay interpretation of the zoning, neighborhood commercial, but we'll be putting on expert testimony from the planner.
No problem. And before I get started in showing you some, some more information about where we live, I, I also wanna start by saying that I am pro-development. I, I appreciate development when it's done correctly and is sustainable. I've seen, living in Jersey City for as long as I have, how beneficial development has been to our city. It has raised our profile, our value, it's, it's a place where people wanna come, put down their roots, okay? So I'm not coming at this against development, I'm actually pro-development. But development needs to be mindful and careful, and must take an, you know, a sustainable approach to preserve the integrity of our master plan, and maintain the delicate balance of our urban fabric. And I really feel that Jersey City now has really crossed this, this threshold, where it used to be more of a city in need of development, to bring, to bring us all up. We've crossed that now. We're, we're at the point where we're more of a destination or a city where developers are looking for to develop. So we're at the other side of it now. What you're gonna see further on in this are key topics, the values, now I'm talking about the Safran and the HOA that I have fiduciary responsibility to represent, which include our rooftop views. I wanna explain more about what you've seen and heard about our courtyard light, and some of the noise issues, the traffic with congestion, street parking, air pollution, that we would be getting worse if this development were to go up, the various noise impacts, the fit, the fit of this structure, not only towering well beyond what is permissible in the zone, but if you think about it, it's getting super wide as well, in a limited space, particularly the Maxwell Street, the sidewalks. And then I'll touch upon permanence and precedence. Light. Now, you've seen this here slide before, where our-
I don't know that they can, you guys, can you see the slides on your screens?
Yes.
So you can read what he's talking, okay.
Great. So this was presented by our expert witness, our architect, Vikrant, and this gives you a sense of what our courtyard looks like, and how light reflects through this courtyard. Now, this is a picture, not a rendering, that I took. This is direct sunlight hitting one side of our courtyard, where, by the way, half of our residents live in the courtyard. Now, the light here was engineered and purposefully reflects off of the walls, through the glass, off the glass, I should say, and off the light-colored facade, which is not only colored, but it has a glossy cover on it. So it is emitting a pyramid effect of light, and it lights up the entire courtyard, and that light enters all of the units. This is hard to explain without seeing it in person, I'm doing my best to show you here in a, in an image. Now, this is a visual representation, representation of that pyramid effect, the lights bouncing all around, and it floods the units with light. Here's an example of a unit, this happens to be my unit. You can see the light on the left side of this image, that is sunlight bouncing directly into my unit. Here's another shot of that. And you can see directly out the top part of that window, which is our balcony, the direct light hitting the Safran on the north side and bouncing into our unit. You can see the sun's-
Before, before you move on-
Yes.
Because I had a little hard time understanding this.
Maybe the next image.
What I'm trying to show is, no, leave it on this one, because in the, the top of the, I can't remember the word for those, but those windows at the top of the door to the balcony, you're looking at, I understand from Gabby, I don't want you to repeat it for the record, you're looking at direct sunlight on that white paint. Just below it, it's looking gray, and that's the creeping shadow. So that's the difference, and you see how the light in his apartment is coming in through the upper part of the window, where it's opposite the full sunlight on the opposite wall. Have I explained that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Another example of that, you can see what she just described, the light bouncing directly. And so, our apartments have the benefit of sunlight. This is not like living in a basement apartment, which it would become, very similar to that, without the reflective light that we're enjoying. I don't know if anyone here lives in a basement apartment, I certainly don't, and there's reasons why we don't. I don't, I don't think I need to explain those. Maxwell Alley. Now, you've heard some testimony about the flattening of the, the alley, I just wanted to give you a sense of the width of this alley. It's pretty narrow, it's actually 10.75 feet wide. Here is an image of a moving truck on a random day, moving in and out, out of our building. There's not enough space for a pedestrian on the sidewalk to pass by, nor is there enough space for maybe another truck to pass by. A vehicle can maybe squeeze by. It's very narrow. Here is what the city garbage removal truck does once in a while. They come up the opposite side of Maxwell, against traffic. I'm trying to pull into my garage here. This is me making a left on Jersey, trying to enter Maxwell. I can't get around this truck. And so, it's extremely narrow, and this truck does not have to back in or out. Now, the proposal that I've heard from this development plan is that trucks will need to be backing in and out in this dangerous corner, and they barely have enough room to get it up and down the street collecting garbage. I don't see how that's gonna be feasible, but that's what this development is proposing, that they try and, and do. Views. We have an amenity at our HOA that all the members that, all the residents that live there benefit and enjoy from, and here, and, and that's our shared rooftop. Here's an image of our shared rooftop and our beautiful downtown Jersey City skyline views.
And I just apologize, this is looking east towards the Hudson.
Towards the Hudson, correct. Now, you've seen the testimony, prior testimony from our, our architect, Vikrant, explaining how, on the left is our current view, and on the right is what the view might look like, should this development be put up.
And I gotta ask you a couple things. Where did you get the image from the right from?
That was taken from our expert witness architect's plan, I mean-
No, it's from-
Presentation that came from the, the developer's application.
That's what I'm gonna say. It is, it is the developer's photograph, the image on the right, with the colorful mural, I'll say. Can you help the board members orient themselves as to the proportions in this picture, which I understand is layman, you have done, to be as close as possible, can you draw their attention to the buildings over on the left hand of both pictures, where you have building gap, skinny building, fat building? Can you, without being able to touch the screen, indicate that, so that they understand that these pictures, while at slightly different angles, are very similar in terms of the scale of the buildings and the distance?
Sure. On the left side of the, of both images, you will see the, back in the skyline, towards the back of the image, you will see several buildings. There is a tall building with kind of a little bit of a gap, and then another equivalently tall, little skinnier building, and then to the right of that, a larger building. So we aligned using those anchors to place, the develop, or the developer placed his renderings on top of that, to, to anchor those angles.
Does anybody on board have any question about that? I wanna make sure it's really clear. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it seem as apples-to-apples as I can with my, with my Photoshop skills, which are lacking, as are my presentation skills here with this PowerPoint. Now, moving on to a closer image of the proposed development, and using, again, those same anchor points, this in red, this red outline that we've put here with a little bit of color fade in the center, is meant to illustrate the dimensions of the building, and how it would be viewed from our rooftop. And we're gonna superimpose this on our current views on the next slides, and you'll see the amount of, of blockage or lack of skyline that we're gonna see. So I just wanted to make sure that you were clearly seeing that this is the space up to the top of that skyline, left and right, which would be blocked from our view. And here, for better, for further illustration, is our current view on the top left, and on the bottom right would be the proposed view that would be left, should this be, should this be built.
And I have a question for you. This red square is a little bit schematic. There would actually be a bite taken out in the upper right corner, is that not correct? If that red square were precisely following the line of the proposed building, there'd be a little bite taken out of it up there, but as you can see, there's no view behind it, but I just want you to confirm that this is a schematic.
Confirmed.
Okay.
Same view at night, this is our, our nighttime view. Pretty dramatic, pretty beautiful. And yet again, the similar blockage. Now, you may have heard from our previous testimony, our real estate experts, when they're showing these apartments for, for rental or for purchase, you go into, you enter the unit, is it the size they like, whatever, sure, let, let's look at the amenities. You, you, the first, first thing they see is this view, and they, they ask, where do we sign, how soon can we move in? Permanence, the sense of permanence. What I mean to say here is that businesses are transient, businesses open, businesses close, businesses transform, right? We're sure that the developer's gonna follow their current claims of recording studios and art galleries and all that, but these spaces can easily be repurposed for other self-serving needs. Who knows if they're gonna stay that way? Businesses will probably dictate that, they're gonna change in five or 10 years anyhow. So what isn't gonna change is the permanence of this structure. It will forever, or for our lifetime at least, mar our downtown, our downtown plan and our skyline, and our, our, our urban fabric. Noise. Yeah, I mean, this is kinda funny, but when you think about the amount of noise that will be emanating from not just Maxwell and the street and the traffic and the parking, the trucks backing in and out with their beeps, the deliveries, add to that all of the events, this is not just a hotel. Mind you, this is very clearly going to be a beacon event space in downtown. That rooftop, which will be open-air partially, will be blasting sound and noise during every event. We're literally right next door to this. And at that height, that sound's going to be emanating for blocks and blocks and blocks to our neighborhood. The point on noise with these events can't be lost in that, I understand, the board here doesn't make decisions on noise ordinances, we have laws for that, the city covers that, right? But realistically, what be cop is gonna be parking his car, his unit, outside of the hotel, walking through the lobby, getting into an elevator, going to the top when there's this wedding occurring, and people are having a good time, he's gonna, what, he's gonna go there, and he's gonna unplug the DJ at 10 o'clock, when the noise needs to be? No, it, it, it's not realistically gonna happen. It can't. And so to say that these, these, these impacts won't be detrimental to us, and to say that we have laws and we have ordinances, yeah, that's great and fine, but in a practical sense, unlikely that's gonna happen. Precedents. We, we've heard, the planner, he was attempting to claim that this D1 variance and the exceptions to the zoning plan don't set a precedent for future out-of-scope projects like this one. Yet, at the same time, attempting to say that some eight-story structure in a permitted zone just a few blocks away somehow means that it's okay. Which one is it, right? Absolutely sets a precedence. That's gonna be used by every developer after this one, and so on, should this one be approved. Value loss. Now, this speaks to, again, the fiduciary responsibility I have to the 76 owners of the Safran. Our expert witness, our appraiser, has estimated a 10% reduction in value based on the factors that this hotel and event space would impose on our property values. That's, boils down to $6 million in valuation loss for the building, and approximately $82,000 per unit. So everyone is gonna be feeling this negatively, should this be built. Now, I have, as part of the Harsemus Cove Association- Now, I have, as part of the Harsmuss Co. Association, hearing a lot from not only neighbors but also people in our, in our area, but who are activists and community, known community entities such as Sam Pessin. I know that you may be familiar with Sam, tried to read his statement here before, but he has told me that while he personally knows the developers that are trying to put this together, he's friends with them?
He can't speak to what Mr. Pessin thinks, but he can say what Mr. Pessin told him.
It's not being offered for the truth that that's what Mr. Pessin thinks. It's his sense impression of what Mr. Pessin said to him, and I respectfully submit, that is not hearsay.
Why does he need this call, when he feels, he didn't have to tell us what the person in the first row does?
Because Mr. Pessin's elderly and sick and can't be here, and this board has said, and this board has said that his letter won't be accepted. I have an eyewitness to what he said, and he wanted very much to put on what Mr. Pessin was hoping that Gabby would be able to convey. Again, not for the truth, I don't know what Mr. Pessin thinks, but Gabby's truthful and he heard him saying.
I know Mr. Pessin, we all know Mr. Pessin. He goes to many, many meetings, I don't know if he's not doing well today, but I, you take it for what it is, but it's not Mr. Pessin you're saying.
Yes, correct. It's what Mr. Pessin has conveyed to me personally. While he is familiar with the developer and knows and respects them, he knows they operate restaurants that are, are just fine, that he treats his staff very well, and that's all well and good, but he feels that this is wrong for the community, wrong for the area, and he feels that this is a mistake on behalf of the developer. And he absolutely agrees with the rest of the community boards, who all have said the same thing, that they're not feeling that this development is right or fits in the scheme where we live and does not promote any benefit to the neighbors that live there.
And by the neighbors that live there, do you mean, I had talked about your three spheres, the actual Safran residents, including yourself, the Safran residents that you have responsibility for, and the larger neighborhood of which you're elected, I don't know if it's official, but you can't look at me and nod.
All three. Well, I'm saying all three, yes, all three, yes, yes. So, the desires of a single entity or business really doesn't trump those of the entire community or a large portion of them. You're hearing testimony, not only from the assembled group of experts that you've heard from already, but a large segment of the constituents and residents that you serve and I serve. We had, I don't know how many dozens here over the last several meetings. No, no, these are the actual, I, there's some that can't make it, including Sam, but that we have 300, 333 community residents who cannot all be here at these meetings, and they wanted to commit their rejection of this proposal in writing, and we want...
Right. And, and I just, I just wanted to ask Gabby for a couple, a couple of questions, he's authorizing this. Gabby, I just want you to... Well, that's fine, if he's welcome to, he's welcome to. Just, if you would give me the courtesy, Mr. Lapaglia, please, to ask a question of my witness. Gabby, did you man a table at the street fair, whatever it was?
I did.
Did you see people lining up to sign your petition?
They did.
What did you see? Do you know who those people are?
No.
Do you know that they are who they claimed to be when they signed your petition?
No.
But you saw them and you talked to them and you heard their concerns?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to mark this as an exhibit, I'm going to hand them over to Francisco.
I don't think we're actually going to accept that.
All right, I'm offering it, I'm offering it, I understand you're not going to accept it. Gabby has offered the, the 300 signatures he's testified as to how he got them. Would you like to testify as to, again, sense impressions?
Let's not be labidus.
I'm sorry.
No, you can take it up.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, you are preventing Mr. Feligue from giving the board the benefit of his sense impressions as to what people said to him, whether it's true or not, I don't know if they hate the building, but he heard them say, you are preventing, and you're preventing me from marking these signed papers that he collected and he has authenticated as evidence. You're, you're preventing me from doing that. Okay, Chuck, you okay with that? You want me to, you want me to have that point in my appeal, or you want to take this and then you, then I don't have a point?
I'm fine if you have that in your appeal, because we don't accept them, for the reason she just asked these questions. He doesn't know who signed it, you know, what their names, we don't, we don't, we don't know what the petition said, just when the people come in.
Well, it says...
So, that's why, that's, that's why boards don't accept petitions.
Can we just move on, please? Absolutely, I'm happy to.
Yes, we are moving on to just remind or reiterate that this site is just ill-suited for the use proposed.
Oh Gabby, can you just remind me for the record, I don't know if you said it, how many signatures do you have?
333.
Okay, good, thank you.
It's on the record.
Great, thank you.
And Chuck's going to bring 3,033.
That's fine, he's welcome to.
And neither one will be accepted.
Okay.
I, I, I'm almost finished, Vinny, thank you, Vincent, excuse me.
Mr. Lapaglia.
Mr. Lapaglia.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, just to wrap this up, the site is ill-suited for the use proposed. This has real neighborhood impacts, and it does real harm to the zone scheme. And I will conclude with, the law, the laws clearly say, this is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll have my experts next time and a couple of residents, as I said, who maybe didn't make it this time. Thank you very much.
Right, so I, I didn't expect that we'd be done that early tonight. But as far as housekeeping, you know, for going forward, maybe, you know, Ms. Studeholm can advise us how many witnesses she expects at the next meeting, so we could all, you know, plan accordingly. There is, you know, I asked it to be carried to, to January 9th. We have had some discussions with planning, and I've had with Anne about possibly, you know, having a, discussing a special meeting, so we can just focus on this and see whether or not it, we can finish at the next meeting, or if it carries us over into the following meeting, because there are some, you know, her, her presentation needs to be complete, then we have cross-examination, then we have, we also have, you know, the public, so just, maybe just housekeeping.
I'm behind you, I'm looming over you like Donald Trump. So there are some members of the public here, I mentioned it, Francisco, I don't know if the board wants to hear them now or have them in January, you took some on October, some in November, they've been asking me, and I said, it would be up to you, they can come back.
I think that we should let them come back. I'm sorry.
Okay, just to say, I'm sorry Mr. Harrington was surprised, I called him this morning to tell him about a series of phone calls I'd had with Francisco that I think somewhat included him, but it's a game of telephone, as to how crowded the board's agenda was, and so we basically moved the bulk of our case to January.
Okay, so...
It doesn't look that surprised to me.
Okay, well, I'm glad to see you.
How many witnesses do you have next time?
And, yeah, if you have any witnesses, then they are, then we're going to have to do the three-minute rule for them.
I'm sorry?
The public.
Public, oh, absolutely. Public speaking, three minutes.
I'm not going on, I'm just saying, maybe some of them are here, I don't even know they're there.
Three minutes.
Okay.
Just, Anne, the question was, how many witnesses do you have next time?
Oh, I told Chuck that this morning, and I've told Francisco.
Can you tell it for us?
Sure. I'm going to have a planner, I'm going to have a traffic guy, I'm going to bring back Joe Medici Sr. and his son Joe Medici Jr., because they work as a team, Junior couldn't come, so Senior came, but Junior has the credential and Senior's so old before they even had the credentials.
And they are what, and they are whom? They are what?
Those are the appraisers.
The appraisers, okay.
I'm not going to have Jason Hunter unless Chuck wants me to bring him back, because I think Chuck was done cross-examining him. I am going to have Vicrant Dalvey, the young architect, because he did not get cross-examined. I will bring back, the people who spoke tonight, Principal Gabby, and the other two, to, if Chuck has, or the public have any cross-examination for them, and it's possible that there might be another couple of quick resident witnesses who couldn't come tonight, because we were, we pretty well knew with anybody on the agenda, we weren't going to get through everything tonight, but Francisco asked me if we could maybe make it even slimmer, so everybody, those other people could get heard, so I said yes.
That sounds like about seven witnesses.
I think it's going to be. I think we really need a special hearing on this, because I think, just like he took all four hours, because it's a big complicated case and still didn't get through his, not his fault, he did a beautiful job with it, I have a lot of, a lot of witnesses too, and I just, I'm worried it's going to need a special hearing or need two hearings.
We can discuss that off the record.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Now we're all, is there somebody in the public that wanted to say?
Did you wish to speak? This young lady is interested in speaking.
Right, thank you.
But you are, you, you have to have the three-minute rule, okay? Three minutes.
So, I'll talk as, as fast as I can. Ellen Quinn.
Just one moment. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide will be truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And state your full name for me.
Ellen Quinn, Q-U-I-N-N.
Your address, please.
250 First Street. Thank you, thank you. I live and work in Jersey City. I'm a college professor in Jersey City, and I drive through the intersection of Jersey Avenue and Newark Avenue.
Good luck.
On my way to work and on my way home from work. It's a very busy intersection. So, one of the concerns I had about the proposal was the scale of the proposal, which everyone who spoke this evening has had something to say about, seems in an inappropriate scale, but in relationship to the traffic along Jersey Avenue and Newark Avenue. So the traffic pattern has changed quite a bit, there are bottlenecks all through downtown Jersey City now, that if you live downtown, you're actually dealing with that quite often. So, I decided to do a traffic study of pedestrians, all right? I'm not a traffic engineer, but I did have a notebook and I can count. So, I went out for four hours in that intersection at varied times. I have the report, I want to give the report to you with all of the counting, all the pedestrians I counted. So what I counted, I counted pedestrians on foot, on bike, including electric bikes, not motorcycles, pedestrians in carriages, the little ones, and on scooters, okay? I did not count trucks, cars, motorcycles, emergency vehicles, or pets, okay? I was out on the intersection on Wednesday, December 4th at 2:30. I'm sorry?
You only have one more minute. You're a public speaker, you have a three-minute time limit.
Yes.
You're giving us something that is a quasi-expert report? I don't know what you're telling us.
I'm counting.
I know you're counting.
I'm counting, so I don't think it takes an engineering degree.
Yeah, but I was going to say, I don't guarantee it again, you have one more minute.
Are you interested, or no?
No, if you, you cannot pick longer than one minute, stop it now.
Thank you, thank you. So, Wednesday, December 4th at 2:30. From 2:30 to 3:30, 552 pedestrians in that intersection. Schools out, lots of, lots of, you know, 11-year-olds and 13-year-olds. There's a bus, a bus stop for the number 80, the number 82, and the number 86, so kids are coming from a couple of fairly large schools to get to that bus stop. That explains, I think, the number, the high volume. Okay, same day, now from 5:30 to 6:30, rush hour, 781 pedestrians. Saturday, December 7th, starting at 1:35 and going to 2:35 PM, 602 pedestrians. And then December 10th, Tuesday, morning rush hour, 8:15 to 9:15, there were 783 pedestrians. Okay? A lot of people, a lot of people. Thank you.
Can I?
I'll accept, you want to, you can accept this?
It's an annotated report.
With all due respect, it's, it's not an expert report, it's, it's her testimony. Well, it's a citizen's observations.
Yes, and she testified.
Which she testified to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more speakers?
No more public comment?
No more?
Okay.
Okay. So we're closing.
Unfortunately, we, we don't know...
Should we continue with our agenda?
No, well, there's nothing to continue right now with the public here, but we don't know the date we're carrying this to, do we?
The next...
This is public here, who, how are we going to notify them?
The next meeting would be January 9th, but...
So as of now, we're going to carry this to January 9th. So this way, if there's anybody in the public who, who is not part of either side, they, you'll know to come on January 9th or look on your January 9th agenda, and you'll see when the new date is.
If there's a special thing.
Or if there's a special meeting as well.
Right, because a lot of coordination's going to have to happen with the board members, with my team, with Anne's team.
Yes, I don't think January 9th isn't working for us, but, so I don't know if we'll go to February or work out a special. We can announce it on the 9th, and that way...
Wait, wait, Anne, wait. For the moment, this case has a date certain of January 9th.
Yes.
Period, end of story. On January 9th, on a calendar, it'll say whether it's going to be heard that night or it's carried to a different date.
Yes.
So, anybody here in the public knows to look at January 9th to find out if that's the date or there's a new date.
Yes, exactly. Thanks.
Okay. So, do we have adjournment?
Okay, so, for the moment, then, this, this matter is adjourned, and then we have other business to discuss.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. So we have any, we have resolutions?
Public clears, we have three resolutions, and I need to talk to Tanya for one other thing here about the reorganization.
I think January, we also have the reorganization meeting.
I think I'm going to scream.
The turn is Michael, and I couldn't hear him.
There we go.
Turn on the mics.
Your mic on, yeah. Okay, so the first resolution to memorialize.
I need a drink after this.
The case was Z2024-0015-88-89 Bright SPE LLC. The address was 90 Bright, Bright Street. It was an application for minor site plan approval with... It was an application for minor site plan approval with C and D variances. It was heard on September 26th. Present that evening were Chairman Coyle, Vice Chair Arroyo, Commissioners Shadid Patel, Baron Burns, and Boyle. And that passed, hold on, three, six, that passed seven in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
Aye.
The next case was Z22-087 KSS Investments LLC. The address is 30-32 Central Avenue. That was an application for minor preliminary and final major site plan approval with D variances. That was heard October 10th. Present on October 10th were Vice Chair Arroyo, Commissioners Burns, Allen, Shadid, and Boyle, and that passed five in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
And the last case was heard this evening. That's Z21-093. That was the 225 Dwight Street Holdings LLC. That was the withdrawal of their approvals that he needed for the tax assessor. So we all know who voted for that, six in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
And that leaves one more order of business, which is the annual reorganization. So in light of the tardiness of the evening, I had a trial, do we have to just go with the record for once? Now we're reorganizing, so in the interest of expediency, I would, I'll ask the board, but should we just continue the way we are with Catherine as the chair?
Yes.
And Sonia as the vice chair, you're fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, now we have to do, make one major change. And why are we making that change, Francisco? Why are we doing this? Everything is flowing along fine.
Let me guess. What happens?
Hope you're making more money.
Where are you going?
Don't leave us unless you're making...
Before, should I pause this? Is this a closed session or is this going to be on YouTube?
But this, oh.
It's going to be on YouTube.
I'm sorry, we're on, oh, pause that.
I'll just pause.
Chairperson and Sonia Arroyo to remain as the vice chair.
It's Arujo.
Arujo, excuse me. Arujo as vice chair. Is that all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
And unfortunately, since Francisco is leaving, we need a new board secretary and that board secretary will be Eric Beasley, is it?
Eric Beasley, I'm going to remember that.
We have all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
So here we go. Thank you. So I don't think we want to discuss anything else this evening, is that it?
Motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year and I'll see you next year.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Oh.
Second.